Hi, this meeting will be called to order. This is a regular meeting of the Oakland Board of Education, has been adequately advertised, and we will now stand-- oh, no, I'm sorry, roll call.
Yes. Mrs. Ezekiel?
Here.
Mrs. Falpel?
Here.
Mrs. Bushko?
Here.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Here.
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mr. Tabey?
Here.
Mrs. Marmian?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Stotts?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, there's no executive session at this time, so we're going to move into our presentation, which is the Teacher of the Year. So, Ms. Bolden, you want to come up?
Okay, well, I cannot stand up here alone. We need the Teacher of the Year, Alicia Woolahan, to come on up with me. So, it is my pleasure to present these certificates tonight. This is our District Teacher of the Year certificate and the Governor Educator of the Year certificate from New Jersey to Alicia Woolahan. As an educator, Mrs. Woolahan has held multiple positions. She is flexible, willing to go wherever we need her most, and she's extremely effective in any position she holds. As an employee, Mrs. Woolahan has served on various different school committees, such as our Curriculum Writing Committee, School Improvement Panel, and Pandemic Response Team. Some of the extracurricular activities she's participated in include the School Talent Show, she's extremely talented, OEA Pride, and various other activities associated with our PTA throughout the years. As a leader, Mrs. Woolahan is firm yet fair. As our OEA Vice President last year, I had the opportunity to collaborate with her on several occasions. She stands her ground while also demonstrating professionalism, problem solving, and empathy. Alicia recently completed her Masters and received her certificate in school leadership. I'm super excited to see what the future holds. Not that I want her to leave anytime soon. I could go on and on about Alicia. However, there is a parent here tonight who would also like to say a few words about Mrs. Woolahan. After hearing Mrs. Anduar speak, I think you'll have an even better understanding of why we selected Mrs. Alicia Woolahan to be our District Teacher of the Year and to receive the New Jersey Governor Educator of the Year Award for the 2023-2024 school year. I'm sorry. Yeah, it is. Twenty-two, twenty-three. Okay. We always used to do it a year behind for the advance.
I would try to get through this without sobbing, and I would try to get through it because you don't look at me. So, says, "My nomination for Educator of the Year is a person who consistently has put her students before her own wants and needs." You guys are killing me. Alicia Woolahan. "September 2019, our little boy marched through the doors of his kindergarten classroom with enough confidence to man an army." That would be this little dude. "That confidence quickly disappeared as soon as he realized exactly what was happening. The safety net that he had at home was leaving him temporarily, but he didn't know, what he didn't know was that it was temporary." Excuse me, I'm so nervous. "What came next were tears, lots and lots of tears, from both Nicholas and Mom, and quite possibly a red eye from Dad, although he'll never admit it. Like most first-time parents, the thought of leaving my little boy with strangers was gut-wrenching, and to him, the thought of Mommy and Daddy leaving was probably devastating and scary, to say the least. We decided that a quick exit was the best thing we could do for all involved. As he walked down the hallway, I could hear my little boy screaming out for me. I felt like the worst human on the planet. I sat through Ms. Bolden's new parent orientation in the classroom, knowing that all I wanted to do was run to the classroom and take him back home where he was safe. When the orientation ended, that was exactly my plan. I marched down the hallway into the kindergarten wing on a mission to get my boy. When I came to the classroom door, there was Nicholas with Ms. Woolahan. She was on the floor next to him, gently holding both of his hands in hers. I could see her calmly-- I could see her calmly talking to him at eye level and wiping tears from his little cheek. I watched as she handed him crayon after crayon and helped him with what I believed was a little art project. For the next few minutes, I stood there unbeknownst to them. I watched her be gentle, kind, patient, loving. I watched her be exactly whom my son and I needed at that moment. I walked away still very anxious, but 100% positive that my baby was safe. I had no clue that what I had just witnessed was only the beginning. Fast forward a month and a half to when she went out on maternity leave. She never skipped a beat. She was there answering questions, responding to emails, listening to parents' concerns, frustrations, worries, all while dealing with the possibility of a pandemic looming over us and a teeny-tiny new baby to attend to. This went on throughout her entire maternity leave. She was never not present. She was always a phone call or email away. She even made an admission to come in and see the class on special occasions and celebration days. No matter what, they always knew that Mrs. W. was thinking of them. March 2020 rolls around, and everyone is ecstatic because she's finally coming back from maternity leave. But little did we know that one week after her return, life would be at a standstill. We were told to keep our children home, but to come get the supplies needed for remote learning. Walking through the school was cold and eerie, nothing like what we were used to, until you turn that corner into the kindergarten wing and you stumbled upon her classroom door. Despite the state of the world and the fear surrounding all of us, we were so happy to see her, but also pretty sad to be leaving her. She made sure that everything she sent home with her students was not only the material they would need for remote learning, but also tiny personal mementos that would remind them, even if just for one second, that this wasn't goodbye and that they weren't going to go through this alone. As remote learning took off, it was touch and go at first, but we made it. We made it because of her. She never-- She never gave up on these kids or us parents. She made sure we had what we needed, and if we didn't, she got it to us. If the kids needed to talk, she was there 24/7. If us parents needed a safe place, she was it. There was never any judgment on her part for how we were feeling or the emotions we were going through, good or bad. I watched her give so much back to these kids and us parents every single day, even when she had nothing left to give as a mom of two, one being a newborn and teaching through a pandemic. Here we are two years later, and Nicholas is once again in her class. To say that this is a blessing is an understatement. She never stops being amazing. She gives to our kids in ways we can't. She reinforces how important they are, how much the world needs them, how they will change the world. She's building them up to be life-and-world-changing members of society who view themselves in such a positive light that when they walk into rooms, they have no choice but to radiate kindness and love and acceptance. I know that most people find their teachers to be exceptional, but when I tell you that ours is pretty darn special, you should believe me. To go through everything she's gone through and still manage to smile when she sees each and every one of these kids is uneasy. To have these kids run to her when they see her just for a hug or just to say hi because they love her speaks volumes. Our family is beyond appreciative of everyone who took a moment tonight to reflect on these words. Ms. W. isn't just a teacher.
She's a mom, a wife, a minitor, a mentor, a volunteer, a leader, an honorary ma-- mama, an auntie to our kids, a shoulder to cry on, confident, a friend, but most importantly, an advocate.
An advocate. She's the voice kids sometimes can't find, the fighter they need in their corner, the hug at the end of a rough day, and the smile needed to get the day started on the right foot. Mrs. Woolahan, we couldn't be more proud of you.
I'm going to take a moment. But I wonder if the kids that are here maybe could pose with Mrs. Woolahan for a picture. That might be a nice-- Mrs. Woolahan was also the first kindergarten teacher for all three of my kids, and she's incredible. Well deserved. We're going to move on to Committee of the Whole. Do you have a motion to go on to Committee of the Whole?
So moved.
Second.
Also, just want to mention, if anyone needs to leave at this point, now that the fun presentation's over, that's also fine. I know that there are baseball games tonight. Totally fine. Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it. I had one thing for the Committee of the Whole, but just wanted to ask if anyone else has anything before I bring something up. Jimmy?
Yeah, so me, me and Mike, the soccer coach, went to council last Tuesday? Yeah, after I rushed out of here to go. And we spoke with council, and we figured out the situation with the key for the restrooms behind the dugouts. And it was apparently the soccer club's president who didn't want to give it out. So, that's going to be, we're going to be getting that. It is up to the parents and/or any volunteers to clean that. That's, that's what was also discussed. As far as the field goes, they said they don't have anything to do with it at all. It's all school duty. So, it was back to the soccer team wondering why they pay the school for the field if the school doesn't maintain the field in the township. So, I knew it was going to be a back and forth like that. So, I don't know, I don't have any other answers. I was just, just reporting back what I've heard. But the key is resolved. Soccer field is in a stronghold. I don't know. And yeah, and Little League was, yeah, Little League takes care of themselves. And are these mics really tuned up today, or?
Who was cleaning it before? Who used to clean it? Because it wasn't an issue last soccer season. It was used frequently, and it was always clean. Were the parents cleaning it?
So, I believe the president took care of either cleaning it or getting volunteers to clean it. It was not the pro that was cleaning it?
Okay, so this soccer season, without that president, it just doesn't get cleaned?
I think it's not being open, is my understanding.
It's not being open, yeah. The key wasn't, wasn't given out to the coaches. I think it was a matter of, like, they asked, and it was just kind of put off to the side and never followed back up with, really. I'm not positive on that, but it just, it didn't seem like anybody was holding the key and not giving it out to anybody. I think it just needed a little bit more force to get the key. And I think council also mentioned maybe putting a lockbox up there. I think it was Dot Valentino, she said, maybe put in a lockbox, you know, like a real estate lockbox out there that only the coaches have the codes to. And then we, you know, changed it seasonally, the codes. And I volunteered to take the first to do, like, maybe that's a bad word, the first dibs on cleaning the bathroom, like, if that's what it takes, you know? Because, I mean, how much can a one-hour soccer game really damage a bathroom? So--
Okay.
But yeah, that's, that's what I got.
Well, I just have a question for you, though, because the management and the whole organization of the Oakland Soccer Club is changing since our meeting, too.
Right.
So, I don't know who's, like, who you were talking to and kind of who's in charge now. So, just making note of that, that it's now the Collingswood Oakland Soccer Club, right?
Right. So, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know. I don't have an answer for that.
Thank you for doing that.
But yeah, and then, you know, we had discussed different situations with the field, and like, you know, this council just kind of throwing out ideas, but there's no, there's no irrigation out there, so throwing seed out there isn't going to do anything if it's not raining. So, yeah, that's all I got, really.
Can I ask you a question, too? Collingswood has approved, and the terminology's not right, but they've approved an SRO for the high school starting next year. And my question is, how does Oakland feel about that? And I ask this. I really don't want to ask the question because this is a hot topic in Collingswood, but how does Oakland feel about it? Don't all speak at once.
I could tell you on my end, as an elementary educator and administrator, just prior, I guess, prior to the pandemic, we had a full-time SRO brought into the school. My building was a first grade through third grade building. The district where I worked had a pretty significant minority population, so there was a lot of apprehension there, you know, on behalf of the students and then myself as well, as an elementary educator. I can tell you that having gone through the transition, I couldn't have been happier with our SRO. He was very, very involved with the kids, very present throughout the building. You know, he'd be out on the playground or recess, goofing around with the kids, talking with the kids, same thing at lunch and recess. You know, we made sure, you know, he would, he would come in with, you know, he's an armed officer, he would come in with a rifle as well. He would always make sure that he came in before the kids came in, so he could lock up his rifle and do that. So, I went from being pretty apprehensive to, like, wow, this is really a powerful thing, and seeing some of my black and brown students who, when he first came in, so, you know, I don't want to talk to him, you know, developed relationships, which was, which was really powerful as well. The other piece I could say, too, this was just part, the last round of the school board's workshop prior to the pandemic, there was a district up in North Jersey, from North Jersey, I could look at my notes, I forget what district it was, but presented as like a model district for SROs. And that was right after we had gotten rolled out with ours and hearing a lot of the things that they did with their approach. And they had the superintendent, they had some building administrators, they had the police chief, whole panel of folks present. And a lot of what they talked about as being like the model program and how they approached it was luck, maybe? And how it kind of went down in the building where I was. So, you know, that made me feel really good, like, all right, we're, as a new initiative in the school where I worked, you know, it was rolled out well, and a lot of the best practices that they recommended were being applied in my building.
Just to provide some clarity for the record, we are not bringing in a school resource officer for the high school. We are bringing in a school liaison officer partnership with the borough that will be providing targeted support to all eight campuses. And so, this, the major difference between an SRO and this particular role, an SRO would be assigned to a specific building, and they would be walking the halls with the intent of engaging directly with students on a daily basis, positive nonetheless, given the right context. That's not what we're proposing and what we're working with, with the borough. And so, one of the biggest issues that all schools will be subject to, starting in September, is behavioral threat assessment teams for every school in the state of New Jersey. And one of the members of each of those teams that's required by state statute is either a school liaison to the, to the police department or a school resource officer, and that is required by the state. And so, we will be leveraging the relationships with the borough to provide what we like to call shades of gray technical assistance to school-based administrators, staff, and families for all of those areas that really falls outside of the traditional memorandum of agreement between school districts and local law enforcement. Many times are external issues that just happen to filter into the schools that can often be time-consuming to school-based staff and administrators who lack the expertise to deal with some of those issues. And so, this particular role, the Collingswood Board of Education is working alongside the borough to identify the right balance of roles and responsibilities. But the primary purpose of this will not be student-facing, it'll be administrator and staff-facing. There will be interaction between students because children are in the building. But the primary purpose of this role is not that day-to-day manifesting relationships in the hallways.
May I ask a question? Wow, they are really loud. Is that, does that, this person or, you know, part of the relationship, does that affect this campus? Is it? Okay.
The other point, too, that they do have in common, and something that we benefited from greatly with our SRO, was that communication piece. There were scenarios where, again, this is elementary lens, but scenarios where, you know, we had some pretty significant issues happen in the home amongst family members and that type of thing. And they're able to, you know, we were able to get on top of it right away as a result of the relationship and the communication we had. So, there were a couple instances, I remember particularly off the top of my head, that were pretty, pretty significant, and we were able to kind of head it off quickly and support the kids. So, that communication piece is crucial.
Yeah, I mean, if we're looking at it, at a SRO in the traditional sense, as you asked, I think that would, in the traditional sense, be a major asset to the building, I think, on various fronts. You know, one of the things you hear sometimes is community policing. I think there's a great opportunity for that engagement, you know, at a very young age. And, you know, you know, let's be honest, God forbid there is ever a threat, they're there to neutralize that as well. So, it's very multifaceted. I think the assistance they can give, and I think would be a tremendous asset in the building.
The other piece, too, which I believe Dr. McDowell is similar in terms of how we're looking to do it there, you know, it is not a district employee, partially, in Glaspero, we did it, it was partially funded by the district, partially funded by the Glaspero Police. So, it was a joint thing, and so, in this type of position, you want the right person as well. You want somebody who's going to engage with the kids and do that. And in having that partnership, if it doesn't work out, then you're able to say, like, all right, we need somebody else for this grade or this building or whatever the case is. And we did actually face that scenario as well, where we had, you know, an officer who was just kind of hunkered down in his office all day, wasn't there to engage with the kids at all, and we kind of pulled the plug, etc., and we need to go in a different direction. We need somebody who's going to engage with the kids. Again, that's the SRO role as opposed to the SL. Was it SL? So, yeah, that's a valuable piece as well, because you do want it to be the right person. Can you touch on what you were saying about the mandatory in September, state of New Jersey? I didn't really catch what that was.
So, this past year, the governor and the Department of Education passed a bill mandating that, due to some of the remnants of the mental health crisis, all schools will be required to have behavioral threat assessment teams as part of their emergency preparedness plan. And so, included in those teams are the building principal, a teacher, a counselor or a psychologist, someone who has an in-depth knowledge around the counseling piece, a liaison to the police, or a school resource officer also needs to be on that team. And I believe also, so there's five, there's five individuals who need to be on each team. Oh, I'm sorry, whoever the district safety specialist, so that's the fifth person. And so, in this district, Ms. Bolden actually wears two hats. She is the district safety specialist as well as the principal, and so, the team in Oakland will be four, because Jen will be a little schizophrenic during the meeting because she's wearing two different hats. So, for the last 12 months, the state has been offering training to key members, like district safety specialists and other members that schools have identified to be members of these teams, but they still haven't given us the explicit expectations. I fully expect to receive those probably sometime in June, and we will have the summer to kind of work through what it looks like. The expectation will be that they meet, I'm assuming monthly, there'll be a criteria where they're looking at cases, coordination of effort with local law enforcement in order to make sure that we're proactively meeting students and staff where they are to make sure that we're keeping everybody safe. And so, that's really intended purpose.
Follow-up question on that. Does Oakland have a dedicated liaison in the police department for this, that piece mandatory?
So, the chief will, will more than likely assign who that individual would be.
Okay.
And so, we, once we have all of the details, we will engage Oakland PD with next steps.
Okay.
But I know that they're all aware because they received the same notification that we did.
Do, I have a follow-up question, too. Do one of the members of the team of the four have to have either like a social worker or a psychology degree, given that it's, okay?
So, it's either a social worker, psychologist, or a counselor. So, there, it could be any of the, any of the three.
Does anyone else have anything for Committee of the Whole? So, I do. Yes, thank you. Thank you. So, I just have a question as far as our committee meetings. So, last year, we allocated 30 minutes per committee meeting, so we would start at 5:30, 6:00, and 6:30. At the beginning of this year, that was changed to 15 minutes per committee meeting, so 5:30, 5:45, and 6 o'clock. So, really doesn't affect the first two committees as much because it's a shorter window, but finance could be either 6:00 or 6:30, which could be a big difference. And I'm so wondering if there's any feedback on how long you would, the board would like to collectively allocate to committee meetings so that finance isn't sitting around forever. Does that make sense? Yeah? When, when, clarification around when we should start? Does anyone have an opinion on that?
I think 30 minutes is more realistic to just plan it out so we can plan accordingly, for sure.
Yeah, I think anybody after the first one is waiting.
Is it possible to look at them, like, two weeks in advance and take seasonality into account and plan them ad hoc, like, the way that, all right, we know curriculum's not going to be a big thing next month? going to be a big thing next month, speaking hypothetically, we're going to allocate 15 minutes to them, but we know that it's budget month, so they get 30 minutes. I mean, if we look at it in advance. But if we look at it in advance based on the seasonality, time of the year, different items coming up, can we just maybe brainstorm ahead of time and say realistically, 15 minutes isn't going to cut it this month? And kind of maybe take it from there?
We could, probably would be closer to the, just based on when the agendas are done, more like a week prior, maybe. But, yeah, I think that could work, because there are times when there's not a lot on the curriculum personnel. I, as a general, am not a fan of canceling committee meetings when there's not a lot because I do find there's something that to be asked. But, yeah, we could do that as well. I just also wanted to mention, just for the board to be aware, so Jimmy was serving on two committees, and so I gave him permission to only serve on one committee now because I don't think he needs to serve on two committees anymore. So he'll just be on finance moving forward. So we have 4, 3, 4 on the three committees, which is what we had last year, too. It was just on different committees.
And finance will continue to be the last of the three?
Correct, yes.
I mean, a set schedule for me, for, I mean, that's me being selfish, but like, if it's 6:30, that would be awesome, because the board meetings are at 6:30, my mental is just like every two, every, every two Tuesdays a month, 6:30, so.
I think we could probably agree on that. The finance can be at 6:30, and then we could probably alter the first two accordingly because those are the ones that might have smaller agendas, but finance is usually a set time, set length regardless, or longer.
I just wanted to also point out that it's not only what's in the committee's agenda that we're discussing. Actually, for the past, I think, at least three months, there's been an overall subject that's going to be discussed at the upcoming board meeting that we're discussing in a committee way. So even if we have a light agenda, I think, you know, I think it's safer to agree with Rich that having 30 minutes just allocated will make much more sense.
Set schedule makes more sense for everybody to plan everything.
All right, does anyone have anything else? Do you have a motion to come out of committee of the whole?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. So move on to important dates. There's a lot listed here. Let's see, in May, we have the PTA blood drive on the 20th. That family fun night, I believe, is not happening anymore. That's correct, right. So that can be removed, May 26. Yeah. We are closed for Memorial Day on the 29th. There is a dine-in, donate, and this is for field day t-shirts. So that is at Amada Brothers on May 31st. And then there is a whole bunch of dates in June. So note, the, towards the end of the month, the early dismissal for students starting from June 14th through June 20th, which is the proposed new last day of school, which we will get to further down on the agenda. A fifth grade promotion ceremony on June 15th.
And I just want to note, just for everybody, June 14th is your board meeting. It is a Wednesday, not a Tuesday, Jimmy. So Wednesday. Just because with all the promotions and graduations, you guys are going to be Wednesday, the 14th, so just wanted to put it in everybody's head. It's not a Tuesday.
Sorry, when is committee meeting? I have it on my calendar, 13th. Is that wrong?
That might be right. We might be doing committees the day before the meeting. Give me enough time to get the, get the financials done. June, June is like a rush to the end, so, yeah, that's why.
Okay, moving on. 6.0 routine board business, excuse me, is approval of the minutes. The minutes are not posted in board docs right now, so we are going to table this until next month. Apologize, there's an oversight there. And we will move to Section 7, which is the annual appointments. I'm going to pass this one over to Beth Ann because this is a lot.
And I apologize, but this is the time of year where we do all of our annual appointments, a lot of them required by law. So in 7.01, we are approving Garrison Architects as the district's architect of record. We did go out for RFP, and the RFP evaluation is attached to the agenda. 7.02 are the appointments of myself as the secretary of the board, your auditor, your medical examiner, and your solicitor. And again, RFPs were sent out and the evaluations are attached. 7.03 is approving your non-health insurance broker of record, and that is Hardinberry Insurance. And that is for three years, and it's in line with the bylaws of the GIFT that you guys are a member of. 7.04 is your health insurance broker of record, that's Brown &amp; Brown. And there, we pay a flat fee of $6,000 to them, and that hasn't changed in about, I don't know, seven years, just a flat fee. Your official banks, First Colonial Community Bank. Your official newspapers in 7.06 are the Retrospect and the Courier-Post. 7.07 is a listing of the check signing authorizations for all the different bank accounts. 7.08 is approving me as a qualified purchasing agent on your behalf and establishing a bid threshold of $44,000. 7.09 is the authorization, you're authorizing me to purchase CDs and banknotes for investment purposes when funds allow. 7.10 is authorizing me to transfer and wire funds by telephone or internet as needed, and that's pretty much, that would be payroll, pension, and your bond payment. We pay that way. 7.11 is just the, authorizing me for payment of invoices that occur between board meetings to pay them, so they are current and bring you a list after the fact for ratification. And the only one, I guess it's Comcast and PSC and J, they bill at odd times. 7.12 is approving me as the custodian of records. 7.13 is approving Keith Higginbotham, our supervisor of buildings and grounds. This is a long sentence, so bear with me, as the school district's asbestos management officer, safety and health designee, integrated pest management coordinator, chemical hygiene officer, and asbestos hazardous emergency response act coordinator. 7.14 is approving myself and Keith as the right-to-know POC officers. 7.15 is approving myself as the public agency compliance officer. 7.16 is approving Windsor Yamamoto as the compliance, compliance action officer for affirmative action. 7.17 is approving Dr. Whitehouse as the compliance action officer for 504 plans. 7.18 is approving Omni Group as your third-party administrator for the 403B investment plan that we have for our employees. 7.19 is approving Mary Hopkins as the homeless liaison for the Oakland School District. 7.20 is approving Jen Bolden. And Jen, I'm going to keep this on here until it goes live. There is a change, and it's really wonderful, but she's the working paper issuing officer. But I don't know if you guys know that if you have a young child, you know, they have to go to their elementary school and get all the paperwork for working papers. The Department of Labor has come into the 21st century, and it's online now, so I'm very excited. So now when the kids come banging on the doors in the summer, we're not here, we don't get, you know, nasty phone calls. 7.21, approving Windsor Yamamoto as the Title IX coordinator. 7.22 is approving the school safety and security plan, and that includes our emergency operations plan, crisis prevention and response procedures, and the emergency management plan. 7.23, as Dr. McDowell previously said, is approving Jen Bolden as a school safety and security officer. 7.24 is approving Dr. Whitehouse as the Americans with Disability Act officer. 7.25, we're, it's our annual approval of the pre-K through 5 curriculum that we use in Oakland. 7.26 is just the annual statement that we collect and maintain our student records in accordance with New Jersey Administrative Code. 7.27 is approving our special ed programs that are listed. 7.28 is approving the Charlotte Danielson Framework, that's for your educator practice rubrics. Hopefully I said that right. 7.29 is our annual adoption of our school board policies and bylaws, and they're all online. 7.30 is approving our substitute rates for teachers, tutors, and nurses. And that is it. So 7.01 through 7.30.
And do I have approval, a motion to approve those items?
So moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Now's the time for questions, and I have a question, so I'm going to go first.
Yep.
So just for clarification purpose, on 7.07, sorry, signature authorization, was treasurer here?
Yes.
Who was the treasurer?
Dr. McDowell signs on behalf of the treasurer.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. And then I just have a comment for the rest of the board on 7.25, which is the district curriculum. So the curriculum is posted on the website. However, what we have on the website currently is outdated. It will be updated by August, correct? Yes. So I just want to make that note for everyone so that everyone's aware of that. Are there any other questions?
I just have a question about what we were just talking about with the new bill. Will that need to be, will there be another position that we'll have to approve in September? No? Okay.
I've got a question back to the curriculum. Is it accessible to us in any way before it's posted in August as a board?
One more note, I just want to note that the substitute rates in 7.30 is an increase over the current year, is that correct?
Correct, yes. We need to stay competitive because it's a bitters market right now for subs and aides. I shouldn't even say bitters market, it's the opposite.
All right, on a roll call, please.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Falpel?
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes, abstained from item 7.25.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Thank you.
We move to Section 8, which is our first public comment section. This section is for agenda items only. So if you have a question about or a comment about an agenda item, please comment, state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. Hearing that, we'll move on to the superintendent's report, Section 9, Dr. McDowell.
Okay. Section 9.01 is the attached enrollment report. April of 2022, enrollment was 267. As of April of 2023, enrollment is 275. 9.02 is the safety drill report that is attached. 03 is the suspension report. 04 is the harassment, intimidation, and bullying report. And 05 is the child study team report for Oakland, ending for April of 2023.
Okay, Section 10, the board secretary report.
All right, before I go into the financial statements we have tonight, I did send, those of you who are up, your terms are up this year, I sent you the petitions, and just remember they're due in July. Okay? Everybody got them? All right, just a public service announcement. And Item 10.01 is the monthly budget transfer report for the month of April. 10.02 are your financial statements, including the board secretary, treasurer's report, and your cash report, and all of the backup is attached. 10.03 is a listing of the purchase orders that have been issued so far for the month of May. And then 10.04 is a listing of the warrants that will be paid tomorrow morning pending approval tonight.
All right, moving on to Section 11, the finance report. Rich?
Thank you. For approval, we are looking at Items 11.01 through 11.16. 11.01 is the approval of budget transfers. 11.02 and 03 are the approval of certifications of no over expenditures. 11.04 is the approval of secretary and treasurer reports. And 11.05 and 06 are the approval of purchase orders and warrants. New business, we have 11.07 is the approval of petition, to petition the county office to increase Oakland's transportation line by more than 10%. 11.08 is the approval of the Camden County Educational Services Commission for the upcoming school year to provide special education and vocational transportation and CSD evaluations on an as-needed basis. 11.09 is the approver, approval of the Gloucester County Special Services School District to provide teacher-of-the-death services for the upcoming school year. 11.10 is approval of the First Children Services to provide behavioral consultation services for the upcoming school year. 11.11 is approval of Laurel Therapy to provide occupational therapy services for the upcoming school year. 11.12 is the approval of Invo Healthcare Associates to provide physical therapy services for the upcoming school year. 11.13 is approval of Nutriserve Food Management Incorporated as our food service management for the upcoming school year. And I believe after next year, that is up for bid, right?
Yes, I'll have to go for RFP next spring.
11.14 is approval of superintendent's recommendation to set breakfast and lunch prices for the upcoming school year. 11.15 is approval of the 2023-24 tax for minutes schedule. And 11.16 is resolution to support transportation bills S3203 and A4835, which permit the holder of a type A or type S school bus certificate to operate a type S school bus to transport children to and from school without obtaining a commercial driver's license.
So those of you who, that would be a minivan or an SUV? I don't know if you've seen some of them, some of the, like Holcom, some of the other ones you see, like a minivan with blah, blah, blah bus company. It would allow school districts to use these. So hopefully, approval of the resolution, we're going to send it to our local lawmakers. Hopefully, if it passes, it'll help lower the cost of transportation. And, because right now, everybody has to get a CDL, and a lot of people don't want to take the time because they've changed the test and made it much harder, so.
Yeah, it's harder to find bus drivers than it is to find substitutes, if you can believe that. Yeah. So for approval, we have 11.01 to 11.16.
We have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Are there any questions on any of those items?
Just a quick question on the request to increase the transportation. Is that a request that's been approved in the past, or is it likely to be approved, or tough to say?
It's the county office. What I'm going to say is they have 10 days to review and approve, and then it's considered approved. So we're getting up on our 10 days. They're not very quick. So I consider it approved at this point because I have to pay the bill, so.
Just want to note, too, 11.14, that is an increase in lunch prices due to inflation and rising costs. All right, on a roll call.
All right, Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Falpel?
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
All right, Section 12, curriculum report.
All right, so there are no field trips currently for approval. Item 12.02 is approval for the revised calendar, obviously the change now being the last day of Tuesday, June 20th. Item 12.03 is looking for approval for the summer STEAM program staff. That's listed there. Had a good turnout last summer, hoping for another good turnout for the program this summer. Item 12.04, looking approval for an after-school stipend. this summer. Item 12.04, looking approval for an after-school stipend. Item 12.05, looking on the approval for the school nurse work hours in the summer at her per diem rate. Item 12.06, seeking approval for the following staff for AED training, for their dates and times that you see listed. Item 12.07, we're looking for the approval of the nurse there that is listed. And Item 12.08 is looking for approval for an upcoming travel expense for the New Jersey Library Association Conference. So we are seeking approval on Items 12.01 through 12.08.
Do I have a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Moving on to questions. I have a comment, question on the school calendar, so 12.02. So when we discussed this in committee, at that point, there was a proposed early dismissal day for Tuesday, June 13th, which we discuss not needing, but it's still on the calendar, which is attached to the agenda. So it's still on that part. So I just want to make the note that
June 13th is not
June 13th will not be an early dismissal day. A question, so is Collingsworth still proposing an early dismissal for that Tuesday? I'm sorry?
I didn't
Okay. Okay. So just want to make the note to everyone here, so that Collingsworth has not approved this yet. They may have an early dismissal on Tuesday, June 13th. We are not contractually obligated to have an early dismissal. I don't think we need an early dismissal, it's my personal opinion. But, so, we have taken it off, and so, just want to note that there may be a discrepancy between us and Collingsworth. Not the first time, but just want to make sure that everyone on this board is aware of that.
Yeah, just so the parents are aware of that, too, that they're going to have kids getting out at different times.
I don't, I don't know if this is overstepping, but if we, if we didn't take the 13th as a half-day, why couldn't we just eliminate the 20th?
Our last, tentative last day of school was going to be Wednesday, June 21st. So because we did not have a snow day, we're ending a day earlier. So we have never had, I'm sorry, there were four early dismissal days on the calendar already. Per our contract, we just were required to have three, so we already have four. So by adding the 13th as another early dismissal day, it would be five early dismissal days, but it's still a day. So we can't get rid of the June 20th day. But just, I'm proposing keeping the 13th as a full day.
Just another consideration, I think, moving forward with the calendar. Obviously, now with Juneteenth, right, being a federal holiday, having that day off, you can have scenarios like we do this year, where we're just coming back, right, for that, that one day. So, you know, maybe moving forward, you know, looking ahead, do we try to max, you know, contractually meet those days before Juneteenth? You know, that way, there's not, you know, having off that day and having to come back one more. So just a thought, moving forward to keep in mind, you know, can we maximize, meet the contractual number of days prior to having off for Juneteenth?
And I think, and I want to remember Jen saying, we were waiting for the state to say when they were going to, I believe, recognize it, whether it was going to be Friday or Monday. So, you know, that's kind of why, you know, we were kind of like, it's a new holiday, we were waiting for some guidance, and I think that's why it kind of fell out this way.
The state recognized it on Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think the one year, weren't the state and the federal, like, they didn't, they recognized it on two different?
They do. The state is closed on Friday. At work, the state, we're closed on Friday. We were just talking about this at work going
And the federal is a different day.
Right, right.
The federal was a different day last year, too.
Yes, correct.
Federal and state were different.
That's true, right.
It doesn't make sense. We were trying to figure out the reasoning behind it, because we're like, it, we should be off on Monday, not Friday, too. But they gave, the state is off on Friday.
All right, on a roll call.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Falpel?
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Section 13, School Community Relations Report.
Hi, so I am, 13.01, I'm happy to give the PTA liaison report. The PTA had a general meeting on May 2nd. They've been very busy, as we've seen in all of the upcoming important dates, but I just wanted to highlight a couple of things that they've done since we last met. Teacher Appreciation Week was last week, and I think they had some really creative and wonderful ways to honor our teachers. Muffins with Mom was amazing, and it was outside of the school last Friday morning. Great job, everyone. Spring Fling was Saturday. It's a huge fundraiser for the PTA. By all reports, it was a great success. And a ton of vendors just lining Clinton Avenue, which was wonderful. I'll just highlight, as we saw on important dates, but the Red Cross Blood Drive is this Saturday here in the cafeteria, and that's for the whole community. All are welcome, and walk-ins are welcome. The Tamwood Yard Sale is June 3rd as well. Looking forward to the book fair coming up the week of June 5th, and there's going to be a Visual and Performing Arts Evening Program on the 7th. Yeah, just want to make sure I had that right. The next, general meeting of the PTA will be on June 6th at 6:30 in the cafeteria. That's what it says on the agenda. I'll double check on that. It's usually here, but. And then Donuts with Dad is another thing coming up on Friday, June 9th. I wanted to, but we've already talked about all of the promotion activities, so looking forward to that. Item 13.02 is the OMACAC report. OMACAC has not met since our last meeting, but I'm happy to report that they did support a, which you probably saw in the report from Ms. Bolden, a great assembly last Wednesday, the 10th, a BMX assembly. So my kids loved it, and I heard a lot of great things. So thanks to OMACAC for that. Item 13.03 is the Collingsworth report. Mr. Stotts?
Okay, thanks, Therese. Collingsworth board meetings the last couple of months have been very exciting and long. But the past meeting, May 8th, was a special meeting to approve the budget for the most part. Dr. McDowell and Mrs. Coleman presented the budget, and it was approved. Results in 2% tax increase, and it drops freshman sports and a class on foods. Other than that, it's pretty much status quo. Public comment with 17 people, spoke on the first one. They were upset about the, and I use SRO because it's easier. Now, I know that's not right, the right term, but on the school resource officer, and teachers leaving or retiring, there's a lot of back and forth about that. The comments from the public was just paying more money. That's a great idea, but there's a contract that says you pay this much for this, this many years, so you can't really do too much with that. They approved high school field trips. They accepted three retirements and five resignations. They approved Douglas Newman as the new high school principal. He's currently the principal at Sharp School, and he'll be moving over to the high school. The, they have also approved a new high school chemistry teacher. They approved staff renewal and summer hours. They approved recognition awards for eight staff members. And the second public, public comment, how many, four comments, but they were the same ones as above, dealing with the teachers and the resource officer. And that was it.
Okay. Item 13.04 is the Oakland Education Foundation report. Mr. McMillan?
I have not heard from Kim Love or anything, so I also haven't reached out. I've been very busy, so I don't have anything to add to that.
Item 13.05 are policies for second reading. There are five here. Item 13.06 is the HIB report from April, and that's it. So we are seeking approval for Items 13.01 through 13.06.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Are there any questions? On a roll call.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Falpel?
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except 8140, we're a vote no.
What number? I'm sorry, what number?
I'm sorry?
Oh, policy student, uh, policy.
Policy number 8140, yes.
Okay.
Okay, move to the public, I'm sorry, the second public participation section. Please stand, state your name, and keep your comments, department's or less. This could be about anything. Hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Evening's adjourned.